Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Levens?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on January 4th, 2019. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we planning on doing each capital budget with each committee? Or...
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to start the work session with public safety. Mr. Levens? And Jill? Am I in the way?
Okay, the first one up will be the fire department, fire official. Roger? If you have a report, if you want to briefly give your report first, then you can go over your capital.
Good afternoon. I think you have my year-end report. Just hit the highlights if move this along. For 2018, we had 278 fire calls. That was up from the previous year. We had 501 EMS calls, and that was slightly down from the previous year. We did have some increases in our building fires, our cooking fires, our medical assists, gas leaks, arcing wires, cover assignments, alarm systems. We averaged 19.3 firefighters per call. Our response time was five minutes. We provided 5,371 man-hours at the borough. EMS response time was 1.29 minutes. Any questions? All right, we'll start with the air conditioning project. For a number of years, we've had an issue with the upstairs air conditioning system at the firehouse. I know there was money in this year's budget, and we need to have more money put in for next year's budget to make the repairs. Just a little history. We, through a grant, received a, I don't know what you call it, an eco-friendly air conditioning unit for the second floor, but it has never operated properly. We had some work done this year, which resolved some of the issues, but not all the issues. Lowery Heating is recommending more upgrades to the system. I'm not sure if there's money left from this year's budget or not, but we can certainly look at that.
Yeah, we'll look at that and reduce if we have to in this request.
All right, next. We can remove that from the capital request. Public Works and the engineer have taken care of that. We're doing that this year with some money from Streets.
All right, good job.
Fire engine. If you can bear with me, I know that a lot of the older council members have heard this, but I'm just going to give you some, a brief history of the, how we've gotten to this point. In 1990, when I became the fire chief, the borough and the fire department were faced with a crisis where, at the time, we had three pumper fire engines, one ladder truck, one rescue truck. All the vehicles were over 20 years old at the time, some were over 25 years. So we needed to make replacements to the fleet. The borough asked us to develop a plan for vehicle replacement. So we worked with the borough, and we made a decision to reduce the size of our fleet from the three pumbers, one ladder, and one rescue to two engines and one ladder truck. The question that was raised, and is being raised again for this session, is what is the benchmark for replacement? In the 1990 plan, we, again, had to decide what the benchmark was. Most vehicles, the benchmark is usually age and mileage. If we did the mileage requirement, we'd probably still have the 1970 vehicles sitting in the firehouse because not like to go a long distance. So we developed, we used the National Fire Protection Administration, which is a national standard, which recommends a 15-year replacement plan. We've used that every year since 1990. The borough only asked us if we could make sure we had a five-year spread between the replacements of the vehicles so the borough would not be faced with multiple vehicles in multiple close years. In 2001, we were, is the only time we deviated from the five-year plan. We were faced with a safety issue, one of our trucks, and we came to the borough to recommend that they fix the issues on the truck, and the borough council at the time said they'd rather buy a new truck. So in 2001, we bought a new truck out of the five-year cycle. And that is a truck that's being replaced now, so that truck, to try to get back on the five-year schedule, the truck being replaced will be 18 years old when it gets replaced, and not at 15 years. The way our department operates, one question I had was, don't you have other trucks that can do similar things? Because we reduced the size of our fleet, each vehicle has a specific purpose. So we have a ladder truck, which we call Quint, that responds to all of our structure fire, all our fire calls. We have a squad vehicle, which is, responds to all of our technical rescues, which is vehicle extrications, gas leaks, carbon oxides, carries all of our technical gear. And the truck being replaced is a, an engine, a pumper, and that truck responds second to every call. So this truck that we're replacing goes out on every single call. It's amazing how much has changed in 15 years. The truck we have now does not have airbags. The new truck will have airbags, it'll have rollover protection, safety features. It is amazing also how much has changed. Every truck we've had since I became chief has had a generator on it because we needed to power specific tools. Now with battery technology and LED technology, this truck will be the first truck without a generator, which is about a $25,000 savings. We are losing some money. We always give a good price for trade-in because they're 15 years old. Because this is 18 years old, we're going to get a lot less for the trade-in. And the prices are also up because of, they're telling me from steel tariffs on the, the truck being manufactured. We can save a little money by prepaying the chassis, which the borough always takes advantage of. So we hope to, as soon as the budget's approved, in March or April, we can purchase this truck. It will be here in 2020. Many questions?
Well, just so people know, Roger, this is the truck, this is the primary vehicle that puts water on the fire.
Yeah, this is the truck that feeds, yeah, exactly. Carries manpower, and it's the truck that comes second to every call and feeds the water to the trucks at the fire call.
Okay, next is the fire bureau, I believe.
Fire inspection software. We're currently, the fire bureau is using software that's 20 years old. We're hoping to upgrade the software to a new tablet-based, cloud-based software system. It will allow the inspectors to go out on inspections with a tablet to reduce some of our paper. It will also allow us to communicate with our renters and business by email so we can send them the invoices, violations, and inspection certificates by, by email. Should be a, not nicer system we have now. It's, as I said, our system right now is old. It works, but it's old, so it needs to be replaced. The last project is a joint project with the police department. The state has developed a statewide 700-megahertz radio system. It's available to all public safety departments. Currently, our mutual aid departments, both police and fire, are switching to this new system. The new radios will allow us to have interoperability with our mutual aid and our police department for, for any situations where we need it. It's also going to be important when the police switch over to county dispatch in September to have this system in place. It is not cheap. You can see from the price of this project. One good thing that they say over the term of it, which will help, is that we will no longer have any costs involved with maintaining our own radio systems. It's a statewide system, so they take care of all the service, and hopefully should operate. These radios allow us to communicate. One thing they always say is you can talk from New York City to here on the radio. We, Chief and I have discussed that we just care about talking from here to there on the radio. New York City is not really important to us. But this, as I said, this is a joint project. This is the price for the fire department, and the chief has also the price for the police department.
So, do we need 40? We need 40 for the fire department?
Yes, that's replacing what we currently have. The radios we currently have cannot be utilized.
So there's additional money from the police department to this?
Yes. This is just the fire department's cost.
And what about the, are these, some of these, I would imagine, are capitalized versus expensed? Is that, is there...
Yes, that's what, yeah, this is, this is the capital right now, so it'll be a capital budget item.
And so typically, what type of a period, what period would it be capitalized? How many years?
I think it's five years is the requirement.
Minimum, yeah. In order to, to be in the capital program and bond it, it would have to have a life of at least five years. But depending on the type of equipment, the type of project, there's already predefined lifespan for them. I would say the average, when we actually do permanent financing, is about 12 to 14 years.
Yeah, it all gets a weighted average that blends together. If you do a road, maybe 20 years, a gridiron, maybe five, a car, a four-wheel-drive vehicle, maybe seven. And then it's all blended together to come up with.
Thank you.
Anything else for fire?
Any questions?
Up is police.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The monthly report for December 2018 for the police department, there were 57 motor vehicle stops, and one adult was arrested. In terms of an update for personnel, we currently have three Class Twos in the Cape May County Police Academy, which is termed the Winter Academy. It runs from December till the end of April. So hopefully, we'll get those, those three Class Twos out at the end of April pending their graduation. We have two full, our two new full-time officer, officers that were hired in the fall begin recruit training next week at the Cape May County Police Academy, and their expected graduation will be June. We're currently interviewing for the remaining Class One and Two positions for the summer. So we typically carry three Class Ones, and we'll, we'll hopefully hire seven more Class Twos for a total of 10 Class Twos and three Class Ones for the summer, which is what we typically carry. One full-time officer is still away on military training. He's expected to return, as of right now, April of 2019. Another full-time officer is expected to begin military training sometime in March. We don't have a definitive date on that yet, and that training is supposed to last for approximately three weeks. So we'll be a little short there with him. And there, unfortunately, there's also a very good likelihood that there's one full-time officer that will be leaving within the next several weeks for another agency, the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office. Still pending, not, not definite. I just wanted to give you a heads-up. In terms of a building update, we began, we began working out of the new portion of the police building on December 17th. All's going very well, but for a few minor kinks, logistically, that we're still working out. But overall, once again, sound like a broken record. It's really nice, thank you. Our next building meeting for Phase Two, which they're renovating right now, is next week, the 22nd, and the expected completion of that is March, Phase Two. So hopefully, we'll have a grand opening sometime in April for everyone. And as I've said before, anyone who wants to come through, you're more than welcome, just come over. We'll give you a tour if you'd like to come over now, or, you know, once everything's completed. You know, it's completely up to you. So that's my, oh, excuse me. Mrs. Goucher gave me a public service announcement just a little while ago. Please be advised that the 95th Street, or that 95th Street and Third Avenue will be closed to traffic on Wednesday, January 16th, through Friday, January 18th, due to road construction. The 200-block of 95th Street will be inaccessible to traffic from Third Avenue. As always, apologize for the inconvenience of this road closure, and appreciate your patience with the improvements while they're being made. Okay? That's my report for December. Onto the capital requests. Project number one, this project has been carried for several years now. We've had money since 2014 or 2015. The state police have been advising us for those number of years now that the current ACO test, which is the breathalyzer, which is what people commonly refer to it as, will be defunct this year. They're saying absolutely this year. Seems like they say that every year, but all indications are this year. That machine will no longer be in service, and we'll have to purchase a new machine, which will be governed by the state. Project two, it's a typical request that we make for police computers to keep us updated with software upgrades and technology. Number three, you can disregard this. Mr. Parsick had requested back in the late summer, early fall, when we started going over this, for some assistance in cooperation with submittals. Typically, we request a new vehicle every year, but it, you know, to, to help out with Mr. Parsick's request and being aware of the things that we have been afforded with, such as that brand-new facility. We'd like to just give you an FYI on this and defer this until next year. Number four is the LiveScan fingerprint system. Nowadays, everything, all, all fingerprints are taken computer, is computerized, excuse me. It's a requirement due to the new bail reform that has been put in place by the Attorney General's Office. We learned in June or July of this past summer that as of June 1st, 2019, our current LiveScan system will basically be defunct. It will not receive security updates, you know, things of that nature. So we'd like to request to, to get a new updated machine. Number five is, is pending the move to county dispatch. This is for a CAD system, the InfoShare system, which unfortunately, we don't operate on currently. We work off the LawSoft CAD system, which is the same LawSoft, or same CAD system that Avalon uses. The county works off of what's called InfoShare. So pending the move, we would have to purchase a, a new CAD system. Number six is the installation of security cameras throughout the borough. This had, had come up in 2018 as, as an idea, and it kind of started with just the police building, and then the courtroom, the borough hall, things like that. And then it kind of expanded out to, well, why don't we see, you know, what, what the cost would be for important areas? Like, we consider the 200-block of 96th Street, our boardwalk, with all the shops and, you know, the crowds that are there. So we, we included several cameras on 96th Street, and then we started thinking, well, what about parks and recreation, where you're vulnerable at, where children will be? So we included that. So it's expensive. It's expensive. This would be something that would go out to bid if it's approved. And as we said in the committee meeting, it really, it's, it's just a discussion amongst us whether you want to pair that back to, you know, go from, I think we're at 17 cameras right now. We could pair it back to, you know, after discussion, whatever you feel is most important. At minimum, we, we began with the entrance and exit points of town. That would be 80th and Second, 80th and Third, 96th Street Bridge, and the Great Channel Bridge. And those entrance and exit points would have a camera and was called an automated license plate reader, which would basically pick up every license plate that came into town. And it checks it against the national database to make sure there's no one wanted. If that registered owner is wanted throughout the country, you know, it'll come up with a hit on that warrant. It'll also display suspended drivers, in-state warrants, anything that's, that flags that car, whether it be expired registration, the driver has an issue, you know, things of that nature. So like I said, it's expensive, but, you know, at the end of the day, I think it's, it's something that is definitely useful. You don't need it until you need it, you know what I mean? And hopefully, by that point, you know, we can go back and research. It's not, it's not really a proactive system. It's more of an investigative-type system. No one, no one would be sitting there monitoring these cameras 24/7. Okay, it would be something that, once we get the report and start investigating, we could go back and review the video from whatever area we need to. Any questions on that?
And that system, how long is the footage held for?
We can set the retention pretty much for anything. Typically, it's 30 to 45 days. But you, you can set it for anything. It's just a matter of, you know, if you want to go to a cloud storage, and Mr. Craft is more of the expert on this. We've been relying on him a lot lately with the, the computer and retention schedules. The longer the retention period, the less storage you have. So it's kind of, you know, but typically, it's 30 to 45 days. Like, our depart, the department inside is 45 days. Number seven, as Chief Stanford had, had mentioned, is the 700-megahertz radio system. He basically said everything I was going to say. It's expensive, but at the end of the day, once again, I think it's well worth it. Excuse me. You don't need that radio system until you need it, much like the cameras. We have had periodic issues with our radios with recension, reception and transmission. And, you know, when someone's calling for help, we want to be able to respond, you know, in time.
And what do you mean, Class Ones and Class Twos, are there same radios?
It would be, yeah, we would request 30 radios, 17 full-time, and 13 part-time, for a total of 30.
One other question on the radios. Do the light bars, are they included in that?
They were not.
They were not included?
They were not. And I think that's all I have. Not to say that's all I have. I, I've completed my requests.
Okay, next is...
Good afternoon. First, the, the AEDs. We, we, the AEDs that we have are, they just finished eight years of life, and they're unreliable, and they're really at the end of their life. And we want to keep one in the headquarters, and one in the ATV, and one in the Jeep and the truck, so that they're out and about. New garage doors, maybe they can just be repaired. They are original to the building, so they're about 30 years old. And they're, they don't work very well. Sometimes they fall down, sometimes they won't stay down, they just go up for no reason. And they're a little bit unsafe. So if they can be fixed, I'll talk to Grant. If they can fix them, great, then we don't have to do that. But they, they need to be addressed. Rescue paddleboards, they're long, excuse me, foam surfboards. We keep them on the stands where we do not have the lifeboats. They last about four years, and they're very useful. The ones that we have are, are in really bad condition. All the handles are torn off, and they have sharp edges all over them. So they should be replaced. The last thing is the pickup truck. It's nine years old. The undercarriage has a lot of rust. The airbag light always goes on, the seat belts don't work very well, and it's just, it's, it's tired. It's used primarily off-road, and it's important that it be reliable because we only have two road vehicles. We have the Jeep and one pickup. So we really can't afford to have, have it in the shop and only have one vehicle in the middle of the summer. And that's it. Any questions? We could use a boat. I didn't put in Ford, but we could use... I thought we could go with your...
Okay.
Maybe not. Yeah.
We substituted paddleboards instead of a boat. So that's good. They're watercrafts, right?
Thanks, Jim. Okay, next, the court does not have any capital, but if you would like to give your report, please.
Good afternoon. For a change, I gave you all a yearly report. And I just wanted to let you know, we are only 83 tickets different coming into the court from 2017. And we're actually less, but we brought in more revenue for the borough. So, and I don't really want to go into the figures, you have them. So if anybody has any questions?
Thank you. Okay, next up, OEM. We don't have capital, but give us your report.
One of these days, I promise I'm going to ask for something. I just don't know what it's going to be. Quiet month, other than the excitement down at the Point with the shipwreck. I was told as of yesterday, it's been covered back up with sand. So I'm not sure if we've yet to reopen the Point.
It's open.
It is open, okay. I had somebody ask me about that yesterday. The only real thing I have is there'll be a webinar at the end of the month for the kickoff of the 2019 Hazardous Mitigation Grant Program. Our pool of applicants has been shrinking greatly. I think just through natural mitigation, the smaller homes in town are getting bought and torn down and brought up to code with the newer homes. So of the applications we had last year, I'm not even sure if any of them have actually, the ones that were granted the money have actually begun the project. I have spoken with several people that have, were approved for it, but have actually opted not to do it. I don't know what the standards are going to be going forward. Most likely, again, severe repetitive loss properties only, of which we have very few remaining in town. So once this happens, I'll get with Ms. Goucher, and we'll decide as a borough what we want to do moving forward, if we would like to participate. My understanding is Avalon hasn't participated in any of these in a few years, just simply because most of their properties that are severe repetitive loss, repetitive loss are just naturally being mitigated through replacement of the homes and whole. Other than that, it's been quiet weather-wise, fortunately. So we'll see. I think things are going to start heating up this week, though, they're telling us, so... We do, one, potentially two systems that we're watching right now. So we'll just see what happens. I'm hoping that these systems are going to track inland a little bit more. But we, one, will coordinate with a full moon, so we'll just have to keep an eye on that. Hopefully, I think Nick Pittman's telling me we should have more of a handle on it by Wednesday night, Thursday morning, what we're looking at. But we are actively monitoring.
I have a question that I asked, we brought up at the Public Safety Committee, and it regarded the no-wake zones. And since I wasn't at that meeting, because I'm no longer on that committee, I was wondering what your response was to that? Because the reason I brought it up is that I was approached by a resident.
Yes, I was, I became aware of it probably much the same way that you did through the media reports that North Wildwood had passed an ordinance on that. And it's ironic that that happened because we had this quote-unquote "no-name nor'easter" that we had, which somehow turned out to be a, a top-10 flooding event for the town. And I was out there, you know, boots on the ground, dealing with some issues, and I had a gentleman, literally drives right around the barricades that we had put up, in full speed, and I just watched a foot of water. Fortunately, our business owners in 9500 block all had their, their boards up, so it stopped the water from going in there. If they're able to do it, and the solicitor says that they're, it's, you know, a permissive ordinance, I think it'd be a great idea. I think the best thing that came out of that was all the publicity that the enactment of the ordinance actually generated. The gentleman who I interacted with in the 9500 block, really, I don't think had any idea that what he was doing was throwing wake and causing damage. that what he was doing was throwing wake and causing damage. I, the mis- the, the, the perception is that you need to go fast through standing water so your vehicle doesn't get stuck. The faster you go, the worse it is. So I think if the borough were to research this, I do think it would be a good idea, uh, as we do have an issue with this, with people driving through standing water. Again, I don't, you know, we don't want to burden our police department any more than we already do during these types of events. However, I think if we were to enact an ordinance, it would help us get the message out to, um, to our residents and visitors. Listen, this is, one, it's awful for your car, it's salt water, uh, and two, it causes damage, um, to properties. And I, I think people, it's unbeknownst to them because their wake is in their rearview mirror and that's not the direction they're looking. And I, I don't think they realize what's actually happening. Uh, and I had mentioned to Ms. Goucher, if possible, if we could somehow tie even, you know, the permitting of civil litigation and making these people responsible, much the way, um, you know, in the maritime community you are. If you go through an awake zone in your boat, you cause damage, you're fiscally responsible for that damage. So I do think it's a good idea, absolutely, and I believe we are going...
And the commi- the committee was supportive of the idea and, um, I've been charged with getting a sample ordinance, so we will be putting that on for, for discussion at an upcoming meeting.
Thank you.
To do.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up would be Recreation.
Good afternoon. Just wanna introduce myself to everybody. And also behind me, uh, my name is Tina Prickett. I know it's sad, but I'll be replacing Miranda. I personally know Miranda, so I don't take any insult if you accidentally, uh, make any correlations, I actually take it as a compliment, so... The first one would be the, um, the spring re- reconditioning. It's just a required annual expense to maintain integrity of the playing surface. Removing, removing debris, uh, roll and, uh, roll and apply approximately thirty bags of material and then sweep, uh, the existing lines and then put new ones in. Um, and then we need to purchase two of, uh, the eight-by-twenty-four aluminum soccer goals with powder coat and wheels. Uh, the powder coat, obviously, is because it's in elements. And wheels, um, we make it a lot easier for Public Works to be moved, to remove them for, uh, the maintenance of the lawn. Um, Cape Express has, uh, let the rec. department debar, bar the goals. So since their facility has opened, they have taken the goals, so we had to replace them. We're gonna resurface and asphalt and install their armor crack repair system on recreational court surfaces. This is something that I think that we're gonna try to do ourselves, correct? So between me and Mr. Gear, we're gonna put our heads together and we can get out there. It's frequently used, the ground settling causing asphalt to split, uh, and the paint to chip, uh, the surfaces are unsafe. So that's definitely gonna be, uh, looked throughout. And then this one, these are, we're gonna purchase eight, uh, sixty-by-sixty solid ten-ounce vinyl court covers, um, with handles. This is to protect the streets and nearby residents' homes, um, 'cause there's been some, uh, about the clay material creating, um, a mess on the sidewalks and stuff like that. So we're gonna get the, the vinyl court covers to go over this. And with handles, so we can, uh, lay it down and uninstall it ourselves as well.
Have, have we ever covered these before, Jill?
I don't think so, and that was, that was the issue because it was getting, the clay was not being contained when there's like high winds or stuff like that.
How are, yeah, how?
How often do you do it?
I think it, I think it would be daily. And that's why, you know, that's why we put the emphasis on handles. Uh, Mr. Gear is well-prepared for that.
Are they, but are they, you know, I mean, high winds, we have high winds every day down here, so, I mean, how are they, how are they gonna lay there in the wind? How are you gonna anchor these things down and handle it?
I mean, if it's, I mean, just like as far as, just like sandbags around the perimeter would help. But there's definitely something needs to happen 'cause it's basically taking away the integrity of the courts because of the clay material going other places. So I think, unfortunately, it might have to be, uh, we have to live through it in order to troubleshoot it, but that's where, where, you know, Mr. Gear's definitely prepared to do that too, Tim is, he's been the one that gets more of the earful for it.
Who, who's?
Tim.
Oh, Tim.
We, we will look and see if there's any mechanical ones that are more secure.
Right.
This was the first blush, number one, that Tina's really been seeing. This is something that Miranda had prepared, um, back in like May or June.
Grant, you, you have something to add to this?
It's mostly in the winter time when the, when you, the, uh, porch freezes after a rain. It'll foam up and then you get heavy winds that'll blow right off the porch. But that's mainly in the winter months and fall months.
So they wouldn't be...
The porch is not active.
In the summertime, it's not like it'd go, okay?
It's wet down when you do that.
Yeah, he sprays it down. But it's just, it's also saving money in the long run, as it says on here, because the material needs to be replaced and reconditioned throughout the year. So it's kind of keeping the integrity of what we're putting down. Um, this is the eighty-second Street Park tiles. Um, some of the rubber tiles are peeling up and have become tripping hazards. Um, this is gonna be happening, and then we're also, is the removal of sand on here as well?
We're looking at, yeah, part of the reason is the sand that's around there is causing damage to this and also to the fencing.
The fencing, yeah.
We are looking at the possibility of removing the sand.
Yeah, the sand surrounding the eighty-second Street, uh, Park is, as per Miranda's, uh, notes, the sand was like, kinda acting as a sand blast and it was, uh, jeopardizing, um, the coating and everything through the metal, uh, fencing around it, which is then produces rust and becomes a huge safety hazard.
So we're looking at the options of what to do. Put down a different type of surface, combination of the tiles, different surface, putting in, um, some, some dune grass, things like that, that'll protect the area opposed to destroy it.
Right. Yep, and then here, this is the excavating of the sand altogether. Um, so just getting rid of the sand that surrounds the playgrounds and then replacing it with the tiles that are there now and then in addition to doing the maintenance to the tires, as previously stated.
And that's it for you.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, Tourism does not have any capital this year, but should give you a brief update.
I'll give you an update.
And introduce herself.
Yes, hi, I'm Jenny Olson. Anyone that doesn't know me, I've been replacing the other half of, uh, Miranda's duties. So, uh, I know I have some rather large shoes to fill, um, but I am confident. I've been here about a week, so, um, I'll be taking on, uh, the special events, borough events. Right now, as far as special events go, um, applications have been sent out to any organization that has, um, returned a commitment letter. Um, we have received, uh, four back already and they are in circulation. I'm still waiting on eight, um, to come back. Um, as far as the Arts and Crafts Festival goes, I've started working on that as well, it's August third and fourth, if you don't know that. Um, monitoring the Shaq Fest website. We, to date, as of this morning, we have eighty-five returning vendors and another sixteen new. Um, they have till February twenty-eighth to, um, to, uh, sign up. Um, I will also be taking on, uh, the farmer's market this year, so, uh, that I, right now, I am, I have all the files from Kim. Uh, and I'm updating the applications and all the rules and regulations and guidelines, so that's something we'll hear a lot more about in the future. Also updating, making updates to the borough website. Um, I've added all the council meetings, planning board, zoning board meetings to the calendar, um, at this point. Um, and then next step, we'll be adding all the borough events and any approved, um, special events as they come along. And, um, we've just also, um, recently renewed the, uh, mobile app, the Stone Harbor app for your, uh, cell phones. Talked to those people recently and they are making some improvements to that app. So in the next few months, there'll probably be a lot more functionality and more, um, kind of exciting things that we can do with that as well. So, um, and I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity to, to be here, to work for the Borough of Stone Harbor, really enjoyed it.
Everything I have. Thank you very much. Okay, next is, um, Natural Resources. Um, I'll go over a few of the capital and then I'll let Lenore do, um, a brief update also. Um, first thing on here is for the, um, flood mitigation, continuing the studies for that. The dredge management plan, survey of our Back Bay lagoons, this will be the second year for that, and our annual surveys of the beach, uh, all these studies to a hundred thousand. And this is a capital outlay where we actually pay cash for this, we won't be bonding that. And, next. Next one is the reserve funding, um, for the Back Bay. Last year, we had put fifty thousand in. This year, the request was for a hundred thousand. And then it should increase, I don't know if you can see it on there. But in 2020, um, we have projected to start increasing that fund, three-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand a year. And same thing in 2021. Then in 2022, we would jump to five-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, and in 2023, five-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand. And by doing that, that gets us to the reserve that we felt comfortable to have, um, cash on hand, no bonding for those. The next one is the beach replenishment. And it's the same exact funding, a hundred thousand this year, and progressively increases up to the five-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand. And this is in, um, conjunction with the long-term plan that I had presented to council, I guess at the middle of last year. Next up, the, we do have capital outlay for the Bird Sanctuary, and I'll let Lenore come up at this point.
Good afternoon, everyone, and Happy New Year, for those of you I have not seen. So, yeah, for the Bird Sanctuary, uh, the only capital item that, um, I'm aware of is, uh, the continuation of the replacement of and upgrading the signs that are there. This is, uh, effectively the, uh, would be the fourth phase and the last phase, to our knowledge, of, uh, replacing the signs. And these are just, um, this one is for a series of, I guess there are four signs, they'll match style, um, and, uh, vendor from the other signs that are there. And because Ray's going to ask me, we removed twenty-two signs and we're only putting back about six or eight total. So dramatic decrease in the overall amount of signage out there, a consistent look. Um, the information is outdated, we changed, uh, quite a bit about what's out there. So this is just a inconsistency with that, and, um, and that's the, the cost, fifty-seven hundred for those signs. Jill, uh, asked me to give you kind of an update of planned activities for Natural Resources. I'm gonna touch on two areas, the Bird Sanctuary, uh, and the ongoing work that's there. Uh, one of them is, is, uh, the continuation of the replacement signage. Some of that, uh, planning will be happening now, but, um, we're looking at really replacing some of the signs that were in last year's budget in this, uh, still over the winter months to into early spring. And then this round of signs would actually be designed in the fall for, um, install in, in kind of the quiet, quieter season. I know that there's not really a slow season anymore, so I just kind of refer to it as the quiet season. Um, the committee is also working, I touched on this briefly at, uh, my last report. We're looking at, um, the potential to implement a phragmities management plan in the sanctuary. Um, the, I met on-site with, uh, two different restoration consultants and also, uh, contacted Lomax to see if they were interested in helping us. So it'll be a multi-phased plan, the first phase of which is to, um, get, um, an idea of what, uh, a consultant actually put together a plan for what it would take to manage, uh, the phragmities there. So the first phase of that, we did request, um, I believe like three thousand in there to, uh, in the regular budget to, uh, hire a consultant to, to work on that. We, this would need to be, uh, permits, uh, there will need to be permits for wetland management and treatment on that, as well as just an overall staging of what we would do. It, um, so as we get more of that information together before we, we move forward, there would obviously need to be, uh, discussion and committee, but I at least met on-site to try to get a feel for, um, what's possible, what we need to think about. And then it would potentially be a multi-year plan, um, to manage the phragmities that's in there. It has spread quite a bit, and, uh, for those who are just a reminder or new information for the, for the newer members, the, um, phragmities out there was being actively managed during, through the more than five years when the restoration project was undergoing there, when the, when the big work was being done there. And that work was, uh, initially done and then it was, uh, maintained by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service under a partners agreement. Uh, that agreement expired and, uh, one of the committee members, uh, that has, that works at the state managed to get them to extend for another two years. So, um, you know, it's been about three years now that we have not been maintaining that, uh, in part because our permits have expired. The permits expired when the work completed. So we currently do not have a permit to deal with, uh, managing that. So unless we were to have U.S. Fish and Wildlife or someone like that come in, we cannot manage the, uh, that, that, uh, issue. And the other challenge we will have, uh, just selling upfront is we have sensitive, uh, species in that area so that, um, the timing of management, when it makes the most sense to actually manage the phragmities is actually when you really can't manage the phragmities because of the sensitive species that are there. So this is gonna be, it's not gonna be easy, and that's why we need some professional, uh, help to really come forth with a plan that'll include, uh, coordination with, um, with fish and wildlife at both the state and the federal level for some of the sensitive species that are there. So, um, at this point in time, as I said, we, um, are getting information. I do have a proposal, uh, that came to the Bird Sanctuary Committee, that the committee's looking at to think about whether this is the direction to go and those recommendations will come up through Natural Resource to see if that's a direction that the, the council wants to, wants to pursue. Two other items, uh, we're working, uh, quite a bit to try to gain, um, access to the Facebook page for the sanctuary. It has not been easy to make that an understatement of the decade. Uh, the person that, uh, set up the Facebook per- page, uh, did it on a personal account and connected to it. It's called Stone Harbor Bird Sanctuary, which is clearly what you'd want the page to be named. That person is now deceased and, um, no one has the passwords. And if you think you can get Facebook to give you access to somebody's personal information, unless you're Russia, you cannot get it. I kid you not. It has been impossible to get access to that page and the challenge we have is the page is outdated, um, and the information is incorrect. And people are using that, uh, we've had, uh, authors and newspaper articles being written about the sanctuary using information from the Facebook page that's just flat-out wrong in terms of what things are open, where things are. Uh, so we've really struggled to get control of this. We got sort of lucky that, um, someone I knew had a grandson that worked for Facebook. So we got access, it's been a lot of steps, um, Jill's been kind of, thank you for all the effort. It hasn't been easy, uh, establishing an administrative account. And now we're actually to the point where Facebook is going to try to, um, kind of close out the old account and provide the borough with access, so that, I mean, clearly the borough should have had administrative access all along, they did not. And this is an ongoing, we've been working on this now for a couple of years, so, thank you, Jill. Of course, I get the info, I don't understand it, I send it to Jill who struggles with it, who sends it back to me and I go back to Facebook. Anyway, we're working very hard on that, so we are hoping in a few, within a few months, we'll be able to actually upgrade and update the Facebook page that the borough has or doesn't have for the Bird Sanctuary. Another topic, uh, the Clean Shores Program. Uh, this is, uh, New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection provides, um, labor through a program called Clean Shores, and we've been using them for years, uh, even before I became, uh, working with the borough. And they've been helping us to manage, uh, invasive species and aggressive vegetation at the sanctuary. I'm really trying to get a handle on it. Uh, we wrote, uh, a few years ago, we got a grant to write a vegetation management plan and that, um, this is just continuing to manage the vegetation there. Uh, Public Works, uh, does a lot of the work on this, helping coordinate with the work that happens at the sanctuary. Right now, we're tentatively planning a February, um, work week. Typically, every year, we do something in February and then we do something again in November. Uh, so we're working on scheduling that and that will continue. Uh, Stone Harbor Point, uh, just a couple of things on the Point. We continue, uh, Natural Resources continues to coordinate with the New Jersey Division of Fish and Wildlife and they are tasked with, uh, coordinating and managing, uh, the conservation area at Stone Harbor Point. They do this in cooperation and coordination with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. So anytime there's an endangered, federally endangered or threatened species, U.S. Fish and Wildlife is responsible for that, but they transfer responsibility for managing the... But they transfer responsibility for managing those to the state. And the state is also managing, I believe, five state endangered species that are there. So it's a contorted and difficult partnership in terms of how that all works. We have been in communication with Division of Fish and Wildlife on several topics to coordinate for this upcoming year. The upcoming year, so you know, begins on March 15th with the arrival of the piping plovers, which are a federal species. So that's when kind of everything shifts down there in terms of how it's managed. That's when driving down there stops at that point in time. We're working with them on coordinating signage for the nesting season. Different people are putting up different signs for different reasons, and they don't necessarily coordinate. We continue to be in ongoing discussions on the management options for boat landings and heavy uses of the southern portion of the point in ways that we can continue to try to do a better job with managing that. That should be a topic of conversation soon. They're asking about what we can do this year. And I hate to say it, it's January. Before we know it, it's going to be March. And we're going to be, how did this all get away from us again? We also coordinate, the Wetlands Institute coordinates with Division of Fish and Wildlife on the stewards program down at the point. And this is, I'll give you a couple of points about that in a minute. But the past two years, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has requested information on red knot disturbances. They're again a federally threatened species. And protections under the Endangered Species Act and concerns related to low-flying aircraft. There's, in 2017, U.S. Fish and Wildlife put out a guidance on banner planes being the particular question, because they fly low across the point and whether or not they create disturbance. The challenge for these birds is frequently death comes from above in the form of aerial predators, whether they're peregrine falcons, owls, whatever. So anything that comes above them, they get nervous and at times will flush from that, which causes other problems. So for the past two years, the stewards have been tasked with documenting the number of flights and any reaction. Do they react to that? Is it more helicopters, military helicopters, Coast Guard helicopters, is it banner planes? So that work continues. And we did provide quite a bit of data to them related to that and whether or not there's going to be additional guidances related to banner planes flying over the point. I don't know. I would suspect there might be some. The steward program, just to give you an update, I believe, did they receive the report? I don't know if you all got a copy of the report from the 2018 stewards program or not. Yeah, I can just give you a couple of points on that. So the 2018 activities, the point, this program continues to be valuable for wildlife conservation efforts to try to reduce disturbance while also educating the public about conservation efforts, the importance of Stone Harbor Point, really on an international basis. Program started in 2015 with some grant funding and then was picked up by the borough. And it will continue into 2019 with the stewards continuing their role. One of their key roles, turns out, is actually providing escorts to police patrols on the weekends during the time when there are unfledged chicks. This means chicks that have hatched at the point but cannot fly. And that's a time when there's a lot of restrictions on police vehicle access to the point. And it turns out, that was effectively early May through September this year. So it's essentially the whole summer, there are unfledged chicks at the point, so. Yes, so they're there from Memorial Day weekend through Labor Day weekend. They worked a total of 568 hours over 101 days in that timeframe. They're present seven days a week. They cover typically eight hours on most days, especially weekends, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We have, we track how many, where they are and how many people they interact with and what an estimate of the number of people on the point is. And it's quite a few. I was surprised at how many people. It's almost 5,000 people a day that are out there, based on those estimates. As I mentioned, there were unfledged chicks out there from May 28th through September 2nd. And that's, they were the escorts for the police patrols. The police patrols would not have been able to get down. So the stewards are actually hired by the Wetlands Institute. They're employees of the Wetlands Institute. They're trained by the Wetlands Institute. It's an open call. It'll actually be, the job descriptions are being posted pretty much now. They'll be on websites. They go out on intern websites throughout. There's a lot of, most of the, most kids today find jobs by job boards and postings like that. They are trained. They are identified. They wear shirts that identify them as stewards. The police has a list of who their stewards are. Oh, no, they're, and they're trained. Yeah, they're trained. They tend to be college aid students, but they're definitely trained. It's actually a really hard job. Everyone's like, oh, great, I got to walk on the beach all summer. When they're, you know, dehydrated and wind's blowing, you got sand in your ears. And sometimes people that are not the nicest people in the world out there. The number of, you know, they clock their steps typically. And 20,000 steps a day is not uncommon for them to be walking the entire length of the beach. This year, they engaged more than 500 visitors and addressed questions related to the beach closure areas, to beach nesting birds, the importance of coastal habitats. They recorded 305 incidents, which was actually a 61% increase from 2017. They communicated with beachgoers on 117 of those incidents. And in 96% of the cases, the interactions resulted in behavior change in a positive, in a positive way for both borough ordinances being enforced, as well as outcomes for the birds. The other 188 incidents were 62% where they did not, were not able to communicate. It was because they, they only observed it. It was either because it was inaccessible, because it was a plane or something like that, or the distance to the incident. They could see something happening, you know, three quarters of a mile away with binoculars and couldn't get there. The majority of those incidents, as I remember, were low-flying aircraft, landing watercraft. Beachgoers walking dogs and entering the fence were the most common occurrences that were documented. Landing watercraft incidents, 56, were comprised of boats. 70% of them were boats, 27% of them were jet skis. That's what tends to be coming ashore. Dog walkers and walkers overall that were causing incidents. It was about a quarter of the incidents overall. That was 68 incidents. And then walkers entering the fence on 25 occasions, harassing birds on three incidents, actually chasing birds. In the overall important consideration for one of them is enforcing ordinances. The other is, are we actually protecting wildlife species that are there? And in that regard, is what did the birds react? Were the birds flushed? Were the birds harassed? It turns out 77% of the time that there was an incident, so 235 of the 300-plus times there was an incident, birds were in the air 77% of the time. So they are actually enforcing incidents where there are birds present. We have a pretty nice table in there that looks at how the incidents compared over time from 2015, 16, 17, 18, how they changed. In 2018, we saw an increase in the presence of dogs and landed watercraft from prior years. Dogs went from 19 in 2017 to 38 in 2018. Landed watercraft went from 21 to 56, while the other categories largely decreased. So those are two of the focus areas. Despite the watercraft landings increasing, regulations were being enforced by both the stewards and law enforcement. And it should be noted that when we talk about landed watercrafts, this is kind of important. It only included those that were actually pulled up onto the sand, but didn't include watercraft that are anchored in inches of water. And that makes a difference because of the way the borough ordinances are written. The difference between a landing is, there is an ordinance against landing, but there's not an ordinance about being in the water in your boat that's floating. So I'm only talking about physically landings here so that overall, the total usage of Stone Harbor Point, the southern end of the point by boaters is not reflected in the landing watercraft totals. The increase in dogs, based on observations from the stewards, seems to be related to the more boats landing, because the people landing at the point are doing so with dogs that are hopping off, whereas the stewards had done. As the boats increased, we're seeing that increase because the stewards had done a very good job communicating with people coming onto the point about dog usage. So we have another outlet where the dogs are coming in from the south, and that's just really hard to manage. People visit the point every day. Many of them are new. That's one of the things we learned from some of our, some of our surveys. So that messaging and learning about the point is a never-ending, a never-ending thing. A lot of the local folks know about the point, love the point, cherish the point, and largely obey the ordinances at the point. But while the stewards were not able to engage every person, a high number of beach numbers were still engaged. And the number of beachgoers remains higher than the normal number of incidents. So we kind of think that's a good, good thing. And that, in fact, we believe that they are a good tool to engage, educate the public and provide outreach while protecting those resources and enforcing the regulations. We would recommend beginning some of the discussions about how we can think about enforcing the boat landing usage at the point. It's a difficult subject, a challenging question. As I mentioned, New Jersey Division of Fish and Wildlife has already reached out with questions and suggestions and thoughts about ways we can try to manage the increased uses at the south end of the point. Happy to share a report, or Jill can share the report. Happy to answer any questions about the report. I know there's a lot of stats and numbers in there, but it's a pretty interesting report when you start really seeing what is happening at the point. Any questions?
So we'll discuss at the next National, yeah, Natural Resources Committee, we'll discuss their recommendations on, because the boat landing issue is interesting. And we'll make sure the chief's there or Captain Palmer, see what we can do. But overall, you had a successful year at the point.
It was a very successful year. And I think the fact that we had such a high, when people were approached and spoke with the stewards, we had such a high positive response rate. People changed their behavior, they understood it. There was a fairly low number of negative interactions with people. Thank you.
Anything else, Jill, before we move on?
No, if that's it, the balance of the departments, we will talk capital at our next workshop.
So discussion, Angle Parking, 108th Street, possible intro February 5th. I think the clerk has a couple of correspondences to read into the record before we start our discussion among council.
This is a memo from Jill Goucher. Miriam Brooks, 235 110th Street, called in reference to the ordinance change. She felt it was a good idea, but suggested we make the angle parking from June 1st instead of May 1st. Please read her comments into the record. Also, from William and Eileen Collins at 231 109th. I wanted to make you aware that my husband and I are both in agreement with the new ordinance relating to angle parking at 108th, 110th, and 110th Street, which enforces angle parking from May 1st to September 30th. All other times, parallel parking is allowed. Please contact me if you had, need any further information. That's all.
I think also it's important to note that we did, we were proactive in reaching out to homeowners in the area to see how they felt about an ordinance change. And on January 3rd, we sent out a letter to the homeowners that this would affect, to ask them for their opinions, ask them how they thought it would actually affect them, and so on and so forth. So we did reach out to all the homeowners on those blocks. So, that being said, any comments?
Well, we, council discussed this issue prior to reaching out to the affected homeowners. The only responses you got were positive, correct? I don't think you got any negative responses. And this was all, if you recall, was precipitated by a warning from one of our police officers to someone who, who parallel parked on that street. And there were several residents of that area that had said that they would like to see the angle parking relegated to the summer so that they can parallel park during the off-season. And I think we all agreed to that. Well, these two council members, Mr. Levens and Reese, weren't here then, but.
I absolutely agree and was here when it was initially discussed. And I'm absolutely in favor of it.
So we'd like to bring it forward. Like to bring it forward and make this ordinance change at the next meeting for first reading.
Just in response to the one comment that we did receive about making the dates different, everybody still is in agreement, keep it the same as the meters and the right on red and keep everything consistent, date-wise.
I think so.
Okay. Okay, so we would, go ahead.
I'm going to ask the same question I asked before, because I'm in, I mean, obviously, I'm in favor of it. How do we enforce it? How do we, the neighbors are all going to know when to switch.
The police department will enforce it.
Without a sign?
I, no, I think we did, we did talk about a couple of signs that say.
Just no lines.
Angle parking, so from such and such a date to such and such a date.
I don't remember saying signs, but that's the plan. The only way, without signs, we can't have enforcement.
Well, that's what I was asking.
So we would need a handful of signs, so I would, I don't remember either.
Either. Well, that's, we can agree on that one.
Right. Right, we wouldn't line it, but we would put the signs, so there could be some enforcement. Otherwise, it's pretty difficult for the police department to enforce something that's, nobody's being advised of in advance. So we would do the signage. So we'll bring it forward. Okay.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Okay. I have a question just for this work session. Where are we as far as looking at the beach patrol headquarters for replacing that? What have we done thus far?
So we've completed the facility assessment report, which puts the ball in your court to accept the recommendation, which is an antiquated building for consideration of construction of a new.
And we will have, in the capital, the next phase.
This year's capital?
Yes, for the design.
Okay.
No construction in 2019, design in 2019.
And then for the design, is that something we go out to bid for, for the design? Or is that something that it's a professional services agreement?
It was something that we were, we would be doing through the engineer who has reached out to an architect to work with him.
Okay. Okay. And I would assume that there'd be a design committee, so to speak, and that Sandy would be having input into this. Okay. Okay. Just curious, any questions on that from anyone else?
No, I just wish it was quicker.
It's long overdue. Anybody have any questions for any of these particular committees that, from today? No? Okay. What's our time? 4:10. What's your pleasure? We could go into closed session and start some of these items and come back out. Something that the clerk hates, but perhaps we could do. And then come back out at 4:30?
Madam Mayor, I just have a, just a question.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
And just ask that the new people with the tourism and recreation, take a couple of minutes and come up and just tell us a little bit about themselves.
Good idea. Come on up, Tina.
Again, my name's Tina. I'm a graduate of Middle Tenth of High School, so I'm a local. I spent many years, actually, all of my legal years, working at the Stone Harbor Yacht Club. I taught swimming and sailing there, and I waitressed at night there all through college. I went to college at Long Island University, where I played soccer and lacrosse. It's a Division One school in Brooklyn. I got two bachelors in physical education and then sports science. And I have a master's in exercise physiology. I lived in England for a year after I graduated college. And then after that, I coached lacrosse at Columbia University. And I've worked at Chelsea Piers and numerous recreation. But most of my focus after college was actually in college athletics, where I was, I was actually the youngest athletic director in NCAA when I was 24 years old. And then stayed in that position up until about three years ago. And then I relocated back down home. And then since then, I was coaching at the high school, lacrosse, and I was teaching education as well. And then here I am.
That was 14 sports, correct? It was. It was in the?
Yeah, at the College of Mount St. Vincent. I actually, I coached soccer and lacrosse there in addition to, I was facilities and operations and assistant director of athletics. That was in charge of the recreation program, strength and conditioning program. It was a college where I wore many hats. It was a sister charity school too, so it was very heavily involved in the community, which is where I'm at now too. I definitely try to get my lacrosse girls, you know, I, we did a beach cleanup actually last summer where.
Last, yeah, the last fall cleanup. You guys should have seen the picture.
Yeah. It was a team, I'm really, I really wanna get them involved in the community, taking appreciation of where we live, because it is, you know, one of the greatest shore towns around. So, I handed out trash bags and we walked the beach together and it was great. We went to, we went to breakfast at Fish and Pier Grill. I just like to keep things local, so I'm very, very in tune with the community. I'm super excited to, you know, bring some new ideas to recreation and then also piggyback of, off of Miranda's, you know, success that she's done thus far. I have some really awesome, fresh ideas to move forward with that we've been talking about with the 9/11 run and some pretty cool events to get the community, you know, here more year-round and people from on the mainland coming into, into town.
It's a very impressive background.
Thank you.
And the Stone Harbor lifeguard?
I was a Stone Harbor lifeguard for, for one year until the yacht club took me over and offered me more hours where I realized I had to pay for college books.
Probably a little more money, yeah.
Little bit more money, yeah.
And you're also a volunteer fireman.
I am, but I didn't wanna share that news back there because I'm actually an Avalon volunteer.
Strike it from the record.
It's still good. It's still good.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you. We look forward to working with Tina.
Hi, I'm Jenny Olson. I've been in Cape May County full-time since 1987, so I have been around a long time and lived in Stone Harbor for the first seven or eight years of, when I moved down here. My husband is from Stone Harbor. He actually, is a graduate of the Stone Harbor Elementary School, but I am from Philadelphia originally, but spent summers down here since probably the late 70s. I have, I'm a advertising, basically advertising marketing professional, I have a graphic designer as well. I was for about, well, started out down here, working for the local newspaper, the Gazette Leader Papers back in 1987. I was there, I was their production manager and graphic designer for probably seven or eight years, then moved on to Avalon Flooring. And at the time, they were, I think we had three locations and was really just in Cape May County and I was their advertising and marketing director. And I've, and in my time there, we grew from, I think, four to 14 locations. Now they're in three states, but I spent almost 20 years there. Left there because I was driving to Cherry, from Cape May Courthouse to Cherry Hill every day for, for about seven or eight years and was kinda tired of that after a while. And spent three years kinda working for myself, doing advertising consulting and marketing. The last two to three years, I've been at Willa Creek Winery as a marketing specialist there and an educator. I do have a bachelor's degree in communication studies from Villanova University. Know a lot of people here in Cape May County, in town here especially. I've worked at many local businesses in town as well. But I think I am a familiar face with a lot of business owners down here.
Any questions?
Also very impressive.
Thank you. We look forward to working with Jenny as well. We already did start working with the, they both started, Jenny started the Thursday after New Year's and Tina started on Monday, correct? No, Friday after New Year's, yes.
Wednesday, Friday.
So they kinda both hit the ground running. And both of them personally know Miranda too, have both actually know Miranda, so it's Cape May County, finest of Cape May County. We look forward to working with you guys. Thanks. And of course, Kim is there. If you need anything, ask Kim. She knows everything. So, that being said, I think time-wise, maybe we will wait and we'll do the closed session after the meeting rather than go in. I don't think we have enough time to get started on a topic in there. So, okay.
That was more fun.
That was, that was. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Drag.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. We'll be back and forth.